I'll call the meeting to order at 6:30. Tager, would you do roll call bars, please?
Yep, Bruce Blargen.
Here.
Katie Thermaus.
Here.
Bob Gunther.
Here.
Patty Jo Horsberg.
Here.
Catherine Rensson.
Here.
Roxanne Handos.
Here.
Lauren Blargen.
Here. Our district mission, together we engage, educate, empower all learners, bringing their passions to pathways to create successful futures and positively contribute to our local and global communities. Public comment, item three. I had an email, and I believe we have someone on the phone who is ready to make a statement. Dr. Bezek, you wanted to say something?
Just in lieu of some of these scams that are coming up, and the only reason I want to mention it tonight is we had someone call in from the community that someone was soliciting door-to-door for donations. And they're from the school. And we don't have anyone going out looking for donations for different charities or different causes right now. And if you suspect anything like this, please call us or call the police department. Because we are not sending kids out looking for donations at this point in time, or adults, and we typically don't anyway. The other piece is, I think, Katie, you got the latest one. I got the same thing a couple months ago from Victoria.
Graph?
That she was, the graph she was looking for. She misplaced a credit card, she needed some different things, that wanted me to buy these gift cards.
Yeah.
So there's so many scams going out there right now, that we have a procedure and a process to go, you know, when we purchase or do things. And so if anything seems fishy, get ahold of me right away, or Dave, or Rod, or someone in the D O. But really, you know, we have business as usual, our protocols. These things, there's just a lot of them out there right now, as far as trying to take advantage of our systems. And when you have a multimillion dollar operation, they hope things can slide by without even looking at them. So again, I just appreciate everyone being a little unaware of that, even with our community. If you're suspect of anything, call us, like that person did today. So that's all.
Cindy, can you hear us? Cindy?
Oh, yes, I'm here, sorry.
Okay, we're at that part of the meeting, if you'd like to go with your statement. Could you introduce yourself, though, for the record, your name and address?
Yes, my name is Cindy Johnson, and my address is 462 Mattelane.
Thank you.
All right, yep, you're welcome. Should I just go ahead then?
Yep.
Okay. I'm the parent of students entering eighth and 11th grade this fall, and I'm asking for either online learning or mask requirements should the district decide to reopen the school this year. I feel that masks not being required by students and staff is ludicrous. The purpose of wearing masks is to prevent me from letting my bodily droplets enter into the air to infect the other person. Carrying the COVID virus will mean that students can unknowingly spread it to others who may have optimized immune systems when they show little to no symptoms. These individuals, we can't ignore, as they too are part of the community of Somerset. According to an article that was released just today, 239 scientists are attempting to have the WHO and CDC inform the public about the reality of the COVID droplets that can live in the air, travel at different speeds, and also travel up to one to two meters, which is further than the 60 that was previously suggested. Last week, the new school nurse sent out an announcement about sanitizing stations, Xs on the floor, and trying to minimize crowded spaces. It's just not realistic to require teachers to enforce social distancing while at the same time teaching. We also know that enforcement remedies are limited by what the law allows, and therefore mainly if staff are unable to take any measures that might otherwise be reasons to vote well. We can also look at the benefits of online reasoning, online learning as reasons for why we should embrace the change. Online learning includes flexibility, comfort of working at home, avoiding transportation times, self-discipline, and more class choices. When students did not understand the concept this spring, they had four options available to them. Asking a parent, asking a teacher by email, rewatching instructional videos, or using their online knowledge of finding online resources. Please remember that the pandemic is most likely not here to stay forever, and this is only about what we need to come together during this time in history and until there is a vaccine available.
Thank you, Cindy.
Yep.
We do have this item on the agenda later, so I hope that you'll stay tuned to the meeting.
Yes, absolutely, thank you.
All right, thanks for contacting us.
Yep.
And then we also have a class of 2014 members here, who would like to make a statement?
Hello, everyone. My name is Hannah Rosentrader, and I am a former student of Somerset School District, all 14 years. My education, I now live in Seattle, but I'm thankfully home visiting family during a period of unemployment, so I'm glad to be here tonight. I'm here because I believe that if you are not actively speaking out against and working to dismantle racism within your institution, you are upholding and reinforcing it. On Thursday, June 25th, I and 15 of my former classmates sent you the Somerset School Board a letter for racial justice. Tonight, I'm here to address this letter publicly and to urge you to speak up in support of Black Lives, and to speak out on the equity work that you have been doing, and the work that you still need to do. From my conversation last week with Dr. Bezek and Tricia Sheridan, I was able to gain some valuable insight into the D E I work that Somerset has been prioritizing since my time as a student here. I just wish it wouldn't have taken me sending a letter and getting an invitation to a closed-door meeting to learn about those things. It's time to take the work that you've been doing behind closed doors and to publicly acknowledge D E I and racial justice as a district-wide priority. I want to be able to go onto the Somerset School District website or Facebook page and clearly get a sense that Somerset cares about achieving equity for all students. To see you acknowledge that racial equity is specifically a part of that is crucial. Within your strategic plan, I want you to define terms that you are operating from. Like, what does diversity truly mean to Somerset? What does equity mean? What is racism? And what definition of the word are you operating from when you're saying the district is planning to address and dismantle it? I want to see a district website homepage that has a tab specifically addressing equity in our schools, and see lists of resources for parents, students, and the community to learn from. Resources could include helpful guides and links for parents to start having conversations about race at home, accessible links for student support services, and a system for students to report microaggressions, bullying, racism, mental health, and/or family life crises, all in that tab, as well as potentially regular updates on what current students are doing in the classroom to learn about white-dominated culture and how it perpetuates systemic racism. The opportunities for Somerset to speak and show its values go on and on. Somerset Schools have the obligation to serve students which attend them. At this moment, serving your Black students and students of color means openly and loudly affirming your stance as an anti-racist institution condemning all types of violence against BIPOC in America. Offering resources for both education and traumatized individuals, and committing your district to continually reconsidering how its policies, curriculums, and staff can be updated to meet this moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah. And also the rest of your classmates who joined you in writing the letter and supporting you here tonight. This item is also on our agenda later, and we will be sharing some of the information that you already received with our school district families. So thank you so much for coming. All right, next, anybody else? Did you receive any other?
No.
Okay. Policy 6320, Dave.
Yeah, thank you. So you asked that I clarify, or try to clarify with some language, the purchasing policies that we can address some questions we've had over the years. This is my attempt to do that. I did answer some questions from some board members via email after sending this out, but also happy to discuss and answer any additional questions at this time.
I'm sorry, Dave, my mouse isn't working. Just doesn't want to work right, so I can't go over to the document. But so when I read it, what wasn't clear to me was, in a situation where we're going to buy widget C that was in the budget, and we need, as the year goes on, and it's in a certain category of the budget, and as the year goes on, instead of purchasing that, it's decided to purchase something else in a different category, but it's under, you know, it all falls within the same budget. Are we notified of that? And say it's a $15,000 or a $25,000 single item. How does that, how does that play out?
Generally, when requisitions come through, if it's entered by a teacher or by an IT guy or parent, when it gets, if it's approved by the supervisor, if it gets to me, you know, I'm saying, is it, are they still within their budget? And, you know, is it, are they approaching it correctly? It's the logistical side is what I'm checking. I don't say, is this, you know, I don't know what the plan is in every single budget, what are they intending to buy? So all this would do is say, you know, I'm proposing $25,000, so I would see, is it $25,000? Then the process to make the purchase is RFP, but I'm not discerning whether that's appropriate to, you know, their subject area or their, you know, this wouldn't, like, they're teaching. But is this the right fix for what George needs to fix, for instance? I'm not going to make that determination, he's making that determination. And I'm saying this is how we make the purchases, we go through RFP, this dollar. So in that case, you know, there wouldn't be anything different. If it's within their budget, they're purchasing what they determine they need to purchase.
Did anybody else have any questions on the policy? Okay, so we'll bring this policy back to our regular session for voting on, at our July regular session. Then Dave, your item number five, the 2021 insurance update, please, thank you.
Before we close the purchasing, was there any comment or concern or thought about the dollar level that I'm proposing? I did survey neighboring districts, if, you know, we wanted that information, I know sometimes you do, but is it reasonable? Any concerns, any thoughts?
Well, I noticed the dollar amount for requiring RFP was up, but I assumed it was because, you know, because of what you just said, that it was a more appropriate dollar amount. I don't know the last time that, how long it's been $10,000, perhaps $25,000 is more appropriate for a district our size.
Yeah, we were the lowest in those. I got six responses from our neighboring districts, and 10 is the lowest. 25 is the most common.
All right, it looks like that's it.
All right, so the insurances question, I think this was a condemnation of a question that Bob had once around the table, and Laura, you had posed to me. After reading this brief response, do you have any questions, any further elaboration you'd like?
Nope, I don't, no, thank you.
Thanks. Item number six, then, 2021 academic standards, Trish.
Hello. Attached for you is a list, or includes a link in a memo as to why it has to appear on a board meeting. It's part of annual notices that come out that we make sure our various places, we use our calendar for many of them, we use our website for many of them. And right now, the academic standards are to be published as an agenda item, once a year, annually, showing our community what standards we are writing our curriculum against, what our students need to know and do, and what performance level they are. So you'll see a link on our website that it is updated as need be, and you'll notice that as of June 30th, just a couple days ago, new standards were approved and added to the list. So we won't be working on those with our students yet. We'll be unpacking those, and it's usually a three-year process before they start piloting test items to hold us accountable for our students knowing and doing those things. So that'll be part of the work, our P L Cs do that, where you're used to unpacking standards and trying to figure out exactly what look for rigor. We need to teach our students from kindergarten through grade 12. So thank you for putting it on the agenda. You can see our current standards all on our website.
Did anybody have any questions for Trish about the academic standards?
Is this, well, do we have to vote on it next week?
Just the notice.
Just have to publish it? So this does not have to come back to our regular session? All right?
Thank you.
Uh-huh, and then Trent, item number seven, Coach Advisor Handbook.
Good evening, everyone. This is an annual thing that we bring forward each of the last, past three summers since, you know, that I've been enrolled. A lot of these are standard revisions or updates just to reflect how we are currently doing business. For example, our previous handbook had outlined that middle border conference schedules are typically done one year in advance. We wanted to make sure that that was clearly, that it's usually one year in advance, it's not. Sometimes changes happen at the conference level that we don't have any control over. I think the biggest, you know, changes that I would draw your attention to were that we're trying to put our forms and things that our coaches need to access in Class Link, which is an online portal that our teachers use. I believe most of our coaches now have access to a Somerset School District email account, we've been trying to get them access to those and do everything through that. The other piece with varsity letters, working with our advisors now that activities that are engaged in performance or competitive avenues will have the ability to letter. That'll be working with the coaches or advisors to developing a criteria for that as part of their program handbooks. And then just general promotion of multi-sport athletes and participants. We want coaches to be encouraging kids to participate in multiple sports throughout the year or seasons, not necessarily, if a kid is out for a ball sport, playing two ball sports, that's not what I mean by it. But if the kid's out for a ball sport or activity, encourage them to do something in the winter and/or do something in the spring, so just having that promotion.
Anything else? Okay. Did anybody have any questions for Trent?
I just want to say thanks for promoting that multi-sport, because I think that's what we offer over schools across the river. We offer a high school experience in everything, and we don't cut, and we don't make sure, we make sure kids have a high school experience. And the more well-rounded our kids can be, the better.
When I, I mean, I look back at our fall musical that we had last school year, and we had kids kind of from all different avenues participating, and kids that are in sports and not in sports, and it was great to see that carryover and crossover between athletics and activities, creates a consistent culture.
And provides wonderful opportunities for our kids that they don't get in a larger school district. That's one of the things I like about our school district so much. Anything else? All right, then Trent, would you like to talk about extracurricular code of conduct?
Yeah, this, this again is an annual thing. Every school who's a member of the W I A has to adopt a code at the local level. Just the general pieces, we updated our philosophy to also reflect some of our practices to encourage multi-sport athletes and participation. We had to update our Somerset School District eligibility, the W I A is allowing a physical extension form this year. On a normal year, to participate, you have to have a physical or an alternate year card completed. With COVID, W I A is allowing this form to be completed in the event that a student is not able to get in to see their doctor. They still have to have had a physical at some point, if the kid is new to sports, they still have to have a physical, but it's for those kids that it would be their year to get a new physical, and they can't get it. Academic eligibility, work with our winter and spring coaches on this, too. Our grade marking period is based on semesters, we utilize midterm grades for internal progress monitoring. This would allow more of a midterm monitoring period, because a lot of times the starting dates, seasons haven't even officially started. So this will, if a kid isn't meeting the academic criteria, midterms can give them a warning of 10 days to, hey, if, at the end of the 10 days, it's like a probation period for academics. So we feel that would be more kid-friendly. And then also update our violation consequences to work to restore components to that.
Did anybody have any questions for Trent on the extracurricular poll? We spent quite a bit of time on this last year, I remember, and so it made it a lot easier this year, thank you.
I just, I just wanted to ask one question. And I was just looking on the website to try to find the extracurricular code of conduct, because these are changes, and I'm just wondering, is there something within the extracurricular code of conduct about social media use?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, there's a, there's a part that's, that is covered within there. You just addressed it.
I can't tell who your voices are coming from.
Two years ago.
Okay, I was, I was trying to find it, just figured I'd ask real quick. I do see you have that in the coaches.
Yes, I think it's on page four.
Thank you.
Yep. Page four.
Anybody else? So both of these items, the number seven and number eight, the Coach Advisor Handbook and the Extracurricular Code of Conduct, will come back to our regular session for voting on. All right? So if you do find any more questions, you have a couple of weeks that you can get them to Trent. Summer school and fall start up. Dr. Bezek.
Okay, I've got quite a bit to go through here, and I just, before I start here, you know, this is an update, which I'm going to be updating you till the day we start school, because this thing keeps changing out daily. And I want to be respectful to, you know, we have a wide spectrum of feelings over the whole reopening of school, of the whole virus itself, and all the things that are happening, you know, around the country with some flare-ups and things like that. So, you know, I want to just coin this as, here's where we're at today, knowing that this probably will change somewhere down the road here. But last week, we sent out a note to the parents, just in telling them that, you know, we're trying, we'd love to be a COVID-free environment, but we're a COVID-aware environment. That's what we're trying to create, as far as, you know, we, you know, per our survey, we'd like to open up business as usual, but we know there's going to be some precautions and some protocols that need to be put into place as we move forward. And again, these are going to be changing. You know, we constantly follow CDC, DPI, and County Health, in fact, I was on for an hour and a half with County Health today with the St. Croix ballot, St. Croix County Superintendents. And we're all in the same place, asking the same questions, and it really comes, keeps coming back to us as, what does your district feel comfortable doing? You know, we could be doing something totally different than the other half of the state, or outside of our conference and what have you, but there are no directives right now saying you have to do this, as there are across the river. Today, well, we've started strength and conditioning, and we're going to start summer school on the 27th. Today, you know, walked through the building, talked to Bruce, and just observed some of the things that were happening. We have a couple custodians on disinfecting, kids are disinfecting, so far, so good, and we'll just keep monitoring of this. Between the strength and conditioning and the face-to-face summer school, we're going to, we're going to learn. We're going to learn from this and make it, make adjustments as we go. You know, we plan on reopening on our September, September 8th, that Tuesday date, as of now. And again, as I mentioned, business as usual, but that's, we have to qualify that, but the best we can and what's appropriate at the, at the time. We're making modest modifications for student and staff safety. And at this point, at this point in time, masks and other P P E will be optional for staff and students, and again, this could change. I mean, last couple meetings, we weren't sitting like this, and now we are. So again, things could change. School transportation will be offered as usual, parents have the option of participating in that, or driving. At our meeting on Thursday night, we'll have Safeway Bus Company there to talk about precautions that they're going, that they're taking, and what they could see down the road here. You know, there'll be a strong emphasis on personal and group health and cleanliness in our schools and amongst students. One of the things, you know, some of the things we're doing, we'll be using backpacks this year to start out with, rather than lockers, because lockers and locker bays, the way we're designed now, congregate groups of people. So we'll be instituting a lot of different protocols for social distancing, whether it's in the classroom or in the building in general, we're just going to keep trying to spread, spread people out. We'll be increasing or upping our classroom cleaning and sanitizing. The administrative team, we've been walking through so many what-if scenarios, because this is not just a student thing, this is a staff thing issue, or staff issue also, and I'll talk a little bit more about that, because we have to be prepared for, you know, if we have a classroom that comes down, infected staff, what have you. You know, when you look at staffing, you know, if we lose people, there, we're shutting down programs. You know, look at our substitutes, you know, our substitutes are typically of that age, you know, concerned. So I think, you know, again, the strategies we have to put in place, we have to take all these things into consideration, be ready, you know, when things happen right, right away. We also have, are working on different, strengthening our virtual and distance learning, in case the whole system goes down and we have to revert back to what we did last year. So again, as our caller mentioned before, they'd like that option. We fully understand that people are going to want that option, and we have to be prepared for that. And again, that has staffing ramifications also. You know, people are trying to break down class sizes and what have you, but you need teachers to do that, and, you know, it's tough to find teachers to begin with. So again, we've got a lot of challenges, but these are the things we're working through. Probably the biggest thing is that parents need to monitor students' health daily. And if you have sympt, if your kids are symptomatic, they have to stay home. That's, that's one, probably one of the biggest things that we're going to be watching for here. And that's why I'm going to put a note out to you, I'm going to request that we bring on two more additional health aides. And again, I'll put this out to you so you can take a look at the rationale. You know, this last year, we, we were lined up to have one health aide over at the middle school. Emily was going to work, I think, either out of the elementary school, and then we were going to have an office person working in the high school. But with, you know, this, the whole health piece being our top priority this year, I need Emily not to hand out pills. She needs to be in all three of these buildings, monitoring health and what have you, and I would think if we can put a couple health aides in, so we have one in each building on a one-year contract until we get through this piece, because I'm envisioning this health piece going to be one of our biggest challenges that we have this year. And again, I'll put out some more rationale for that, if we can, if we can talk about that. As far as our reopening committee, we have over 400 people interested, which is fantastic, but somehow we had to cut it down to a manageable number and that. So I think we're, have about 35, 40 people. So I think we're having about 35, 40 people. I asked the principals to look through the lists and start looking at the different demographic of young and older people. And same with staff, so we have a very good mixture of people that will attend. And that meeting is set to take place on Thursday at the elementary school. We use that so we can spread out a little bit broader. And, you know, the meeting's really going to be in, in two parts. And I want to emphasize that this meeting is really to listen. Because we need buy-in from our community, that's how we're going to operate. But we're going to come in with a plan and explain just what our thoughts are as far as how we envision proceeding with the opening of school at this time. And so the goal of the committee is really to review the proposal and see if we need to tweak it at all. And what we're going to do, you know, I'll give an overview of where we're at, what the present assumptions are. We'll have a presentation by our nurse as far as all the connections she has and what she's seeing and what she's hearing. Trish, I don't think you know this one yet, but I want you to go, I want you to go over the staff and student survey, just the highlights of what, some of the issues that we have with that. Safeway Transportation will be there to talk a little bit about how they're going to operate. You know, we're going to look at things like assigned seats, families sitting together, same bus, or same seat, and possible masks in closed area where you can't social distance. You know, that may be something on the buses too. Again, these are all thoughts and ideas, we're going to discuss those. The second part of it is, again, is to listen, but we're going to break down by building because each building functions differently. And I want the principals to hear what the parents' expectations are, and also talk a little bit about, you know, some of the things we're going to do. I mentioned before, high school, middle school, we use backpacks, we're not going to congregate in locker base. You know, what's, what's lunchroom going to look like? You know, what, elementary, we're not going to have tight little reading circles anymore. We're probably going to have to spread out. Furniture-wise in some of these rooms, there's, in the elementary, for example, you know, people have different desks with different materials, different working areas. A lot of stuff has to be gone, put away, and shelves and what have you, and spread these desks out. So we're going to review a number of these different things, but at each, about each site, elementary, middle school, and high school. And then we're going to come back together and talk a little bit more about, you know, some of the 50,000-foot thoughts as far as what our plan looks like and things that we should really take a look at tweaking a little bit. And I know each principal's probably going to have a meeting with their staff or a committee of their staff to take this information, say, you know, here's the plans we want, but if we don't buy in from the community or the parents, you know, so they got to meld together, you know, they got to come together in the middle. So hopefully, we'll have a fairly solid but fluid plan within the next week or two. And I, I fully envision this meeting, this team getting together in August to see where we're at. If we're on the same course, if we're getting, you know, is the pandemic getting worse? How is it affecting us? And do we have to make any changes to that? So that's a little bit, well, it's a lot of bit about the update and where we're, where we're heading.
So I love the idea of the committee and everything. How do we get that information out? What happens at the committee level? People want to know, you know, there are 400 people wanting to be on that committee. How do we let those 400 people know what's happening as soon as it's happening there? So that different messages don't come out of the committee. At the end of Thursday, what are we going to do to ensure that the message that's coming out is correct and transparent? Do we need to record part of that meeting? Do we need to put out a document after the meeting? Because there's going to be tons of questions from more than 400 people on Thursday after that's done.
But I think, you know, with the scoop going out Friday, Friday morning, we're going to have to work and try and put this together and see if there's, I guess, again, it depends what happens Thursday night. There may be some things that we just can't answer in a day. So, but as soon as we can get that answer, we get it out the same way we did the survey. We just, we pump it out through our Facebook, through our Messenger, through the scoop. You know, we're, we're trying to focus that scoop on what you need to know, you know, be the communication piece here, so.
So the board, but the board still has to vote on whatever the committee write in that. Correct. But I don't want anybody thinking that stuff's going on at the committee that isn't transparent.
So you can just, you know, maybe just give an update of the discussion.
Minutes could be taken, and even when you split into three groups, that each of the groups can take minutes so that we can publish the minutes.
We'll have documents from that meeting, and then we've got three board members there too.
So a board membership, we should split up and go into the different areas.
I'm sorry, Bruce, what?
No, like she said, each board member, each of the three schools.
And maybe take notes.
Kathy, Anaxian, and Teddy Joe, right?
Yeah. Do you, is that all right? Can you be responsible for taking notes and getting, and then maybe submit them to Tasia, and then Tasia could put them all together? So even though there may be questions that we don't have answers to, we at least have a document of the minutes of the meeting that can be published?
I think we need to submit it to the administrator that's in charge of that and Tasia.
Okay.
And see if there's any changes or.
So that would be Mark and Tasia, right?
Yeah, I need to get everything back so we can collate it.
And I love the scoop. I think that would be great, to put out some general bullets.
Yep.
Because that is really uppermost in the community's mind right now, it really is.
Yeah, no, it's on everyone's mind right now. We're doing the best we can with the information we have, and, you know, you have the wide range.
And the more transparent we can be, the better.
What's that?
Do we just have to be really transparent, so that we don't, we aren't giving mixed messages?
Yeah, no, we, I tell you, we're, this has consumed our lives, you know, since, since March. When we're dealing with kids and staff, you know, there is another portion of this too, is, you know, the staff component. Because I've been approached, you know, I'm scared I don't want to come back. So we had a conversation with Trevor last week as far as what are our options? And basically, you know, this, you know, to start out with, you know, all, all staff are going to be required to report on the day that their unit or their positions typically starts in the fall. If that doesn't happen, there's, there's some options between sick leave, FMLA, ADA issues. The board or state could take some action as far as, do we want to operate outside of the norm? There's some possible virtual or distance opportunities for some staff, possibly, again, depending on the number of students that choose to stay home. So I mean, these are all things that we're working through. If I were meeting tomorrow morning, we're taking a chunk of our administrative retreat just to deal with this so we can get some firmed-up plans for Thursday night because everything's not in concrete yet for that. And I mentioned before, well, let's see, there's, then there's possible early retirement or retirement, and some people have talked about that already. But then here we go again, you know, with the teacher shortage. And I mean, you can see the predicament that we're going to be in here with, with staff. You know, we have, we have staff that, you know, that are vulnerable, you know, we just do, from underlying conditions. And so what do we do, you know, we don't have subs. And that was another proposal we were talking about is, you know, possibly hiring a sub, a full-time sub per building this year. And again, we'd have to run the numbers on that, but we're going to be, we're going to be in trouble with subs this year. We just, we just are. And so how do we prepare for it? And if we, if we have teachers go down, we have to shut down programs and we have to find places for kids. So these are the things that we're all trying to find solutions to. And we're running through a lot of what-if scenarios right now, and how do we back up the system?
Well, and I have a question about our insurers. You know, like, have you received anything from them, asking what our plans are from workers' comp? Or, I mean, I know you got the bids on, you know, trying to get some credits for last year, but are they saying anything? Because my concern is that they'll up our rates if we don't go as far as they would like us to.
Well, that's the difference between across the river and here, is we're not under any orders. If we were disobeying orders, we'd be at a higher risk level insurance-wise, but like across the river, you know, they're under governor orders and what have you. And if they disobey those and something happens, there's a lawsuit. Here, again, we're being told that it's, it's, it's a regional, you have to take a regional look, but then you really look at your district and what, you know, the kind of area you're in and what you're seeing. You know, if we see an explosion or uptick, you know, there's some precautions that we, we need to take. So we just have to be really flexible with this, this piece. I wish we had a roadmap on this thing, but we're, you know, we're seeking legal guidance where we have to and make sure we're not putting anybody at risk or the district at risk. And everyone's asking the same questions. Trevor's advice was that insurance companies that are insuring Wisconsin schools are not too concerned, not too, not highly concerned because of the flexibility we have. We're not under, again, we're not taking risky chances. If that makes sense.
Is our plan pretty similar to the other schools in our area?
Yeah, everyone's developing them right now, but as, you know, in my meetings with the other superintendents, you know, we're all, everyone's strategizing a little different. They have little nuances here and there. You know, some districts are masked, they want to mask up everyone from start to finish. I mean, little things like that that are changing. And who knows where we're going to be come August? Again, we make our plans with what we know now and then have to be flexible. I think that's the biggest word I've used with our administrative team. You got to be flexible and willing to listen through this because no matter what we decide as administrators, if we don't have buy-in, you know, you might as well trash those plans. We need to work together, you know, these things have to come from the top down, bottom up, meet in the middle. That's where the good plans are. And that's what we're hoping to get on Thursday night, is some buy-in. And again, I keep emphasizing, listen, listen, listen.
Before Thursday, could you give us kind of bullet points on what, kind of what you just discussed? I mean, other, or should we just use the Spartan scoop that you sent out? Is that pretty accurate? I'm just thinking, just so we have the, the main points there.
I'll put an agenda out.
Okay.
I'll have an agenda for you, but it's basically, I just wrote, basically. And again, tomorrow morning, we're going to firm up some of these pieces as the best we can. Some of the things we know, as best we know right now. And again, I just can't say enough, this is going to change.
Right.
And we have to be flexible.
And then did I hear you correctly that, yes, we were anticipating going back in person, but if there are, if there are families that aren't comfortable with in-person, that we are, we are looking at providing virtual?
Well, we have to, if we don't, they're going to go somewhere else.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure that that was.
Yeah, yeah, that's, and, you know, right now from the survey, and we had a good turnout from the survey. But I fully expect when push comes to shove, we get closer, you know, people are going to change their minds and say, oh, you know, maybe we'll, maybe we'll sit this one out and we'll only get service virtually. And, you know, the sooner we know this, and we'll probably have to run another survey closer to school because, you know, we really have to work with our staff to know, you know, how many kids we're going to have, you know, and who's not coming back.
Are we going to have to send out something to parents, you know, two weeks, is your child still going to make in-person? Or are you coming virtually based on, based on what comes out of this committee meeting or the second one in August? So parents.
Yeah, we'll have a lot more after Thursday. I'll feel a lot more comfortable, you know, having a lot of face-to-face conversations and let them take a look at the, you know, the plan we have. And again, knowing the plan we make is going to be flexible. But I hope you can understand the wide range of flexibility that we, I mean, there's nothing, there's no roadmap on this piece. And every district's going to be different as far as kids that get a, staff that get a, you know, bigger schools, you know, you know, they may be able to absorb some of these pieces a little bit better. But, you know, we, you know, subs are tight anyway. And now, when you take a population that's vulnerable, that's usually subs, yeah, we just have to be prepared and we'll do the best we can.
How many do we have signed up for summer school right now?
I think we have somewhere around 160, 170, is that sound, do you recall? Yeah, I think that's what I heard.
Is that typical or low or?
That's low, that's low, that's low. But I think our numbers for, are up, aren't they, are they?
We were able to offer up there 20 spots, we've got kids on kind of like a standby waiting list.
Do you know how many are on your waiting list?
Off the top of my head, I don't know. I believe it's over 10.
Okay. So it's not like another 100?
No. Now, but we, you know, and, and the staff response to teaching summer school is down quite a bit too. So I think the numbers are going to work out. Last I heard from the Christians that they're making rosters, you know, making the final adjustments, and then we'll get transportation involved with that too.
Yeah, I heard from a lot of families, they, they would have liked to have signed up, but they had already made other plans. But 170, we're good, I mean, at least.
Yeah, and, you know, we're going to learn from, you know, we're going to learn from this. Also, you know, we don't know what the financial wash on it is, but it's not going to kill us, but it's more offering the service and getting kids back into the routine, you know, as soon as we can. We still don't, we had quite a conversation about athletics today on the county call because Eric, Superintendent Baldwin's on the WIA committee. And really, it's going to come down to district by district if they want to participate in athletics activities this year. There was some talk about flipping the spring and the fall sports because of the low-impact spring sports versus the high-impact fall sports. And, you know, again, there's just a lot of stuff going back and forth there. Suggestion I made to them was, how about just playing a conference schedule this year? You know, regionally, we're okay, you know, our, the signs and numbers. But when you play non-conference, you're pulling in teams from all over the state. And you know what, let's kind of keep them out there and just deal with our conference pieces and that. So there's a lot of conversation. So again, it'll probably come right back to the board here, we're going to participate in fall athletics here.
Well, trying to hear some great things from kids already. They're, they're just loving, loving coming up here already. I mean, like, excited, I mean, just jumping up and down, so. Especially the young, the young ones have really been looking forward to it.
Last Wednesday, to see kids walking through was absolutely awesome. Our coaches are doing a great job getting things organized and getting kids through workouts. It's been awesome.
So was Wednesday your first day, July 1st?
July 1st was you.
So did you have just two days? Was today your third day?
Today was our third day.
You want to tell us anything else about it?
Again, to say that kids coming through last Wednesday on campus was awesome would be extreme understatement. It was great.
They were really excited, weren't they?
Oh, there's a lot of smiles on these kids' faces out there. So it was, it was fun to see everyone back there.
Well, thanks.
Mark, you had said that there's 160 to 170 kids signed up for summer school, you're guessing?
Yeah, I have to pull up, and I believe, top of my head, it could be anywhere from 160 to 180, but.
Okay. Do you have any idea what the ballpark is for how many staff members will be teaching?
Roughly, I think we have 18 that have committed, so, or somewhere in that. I'd have to, I haven't talked to the Christians yet, so I don't.
So we'll probably be in the neighborhood of around 10 or 12 kids per class, maybe?
Could be, I, yeah. Just don't know that for sure. Average-wise, yeah, that may work out, but, you know, who knows if.
Kids per class.
Yeah.
I just had one other question about the backpacks. I know in some school districts, they require the kids to wear, to have clear backpacks. If we are going to be requiring all the kids to keep everything in their backpacks and not use lockers, has there been a, been any discussion at the administration?
We just talked a little bit about it. I think John would love that, our police lights officer would love that. But I haven't done any investigating into that, you know, and I'd hate to put that burden on parents. So maybe something that, if we can get some type of deal on them as a district, you know, it might probably be the best stretch. But I have not had a chance to even look at that yet, so.
Okay. We surveyed, we got 701 responses from the community parents on that back-to-school survey. Did we survey our staff?
The only survey that went out to the staff was on the, on the need, or what they felt they needed as far as, you know, the virtual learning and that piece. We do have a letter to go out to staff that hasn't gone out yet. So I. So I, we didn't give a staff the same type of survey as what we did with the parents.
So what you're saying is they will be getting a letter that they have to respond individually to on their plan?
There's a lot of information in there and that, and then, you know, we'll, we'll learn more about the status of, you know, I only know about the people that have talked to me already and some of the concerns and that. So, again, you know, that's another step that we have to take to see exactly where we're at. Because, again, not every, you know, if we, if we have 20 people that don't want to come back, what do you do? You know, we have to treat them case by case and prioritize, you know, how we're going to operate. So we just don't know that piece of the puzzle yet. Right now, we're, we're assuming that, you know, everyone is coming back, but again, we're going to have, there's going to be some people that want some modifications or, and some that have to have some. So, that's why I had Trevor on the phone the other day, how do we deal with these? How do we handle them?
When is that letter going out to staff?
As soon as Jordy and I can get together to go finish, finish it up.
So is it the kind of letter that we are going to get a response? Or should we be putting out a staff survey?
Well, we're, we're going to have to have some communication to that effect as far as, you know, what, what the feelings are. But again, right now, the way we have to operate right now is that we're on the assumption that everyone's coming back. And then again, we have to take it case by case. And I can, I can tell you right now, there's three or four that probably shouldn't because of underlying health conditions. You know, we have to make some modifications for it. So it's going to range, like everything else, it's going to range from, I don't want to come back because I'm scared. I can't because I, you know, I have either an f.l.m.a. or ADA issue, you know, so.
Does anybody have any further questions for Mark on summer school or the fall startup?
I just would make sure that that's part of your conversation with the community. You know, there could be differences in classrooms too, depending.
There's a lot to go through.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, you know.
But the more voice they feel they have, the better. Yeah.
You know, and this is very stressful on the, not just the administrative, but on the entire employee base here. You know, look what we were through last year. You know, most districts are only dealing with the COVID piece. You know, we dealt with packing up, gutting buildings and trying to get them reopened, things like that. So we just really have to, you know, recognize that and be, take it one step at a time, make sure to make the right moves.
Item 10, virtual academy distance learning.
Shannon, I'll just give that one to you, so I don't have to talk anymore.
Great, well, I just have the, the virtual academy update. I had said kind of the last time I was here that when the July work session rolled around and just kind of let you know where we're at. So last week, letters were sent out to any resident students that had been enrolled in a virtual school outside of Somerset. I've already heard back from a couple of families and have some appointments set up to communicate, talk a little bit more with the families who are interested in kind of learning more about the program, which is great. Handbook will be brought to you in the August work session along with the handbooks from the buildings and the district-wide handbook as well. You know, in the next couple of weeks, I would say, once we kind of get through graduation, getting an up, or getting a website going, getting some more promotional things out there. As you remember what I said the last time I was here, you know, this year in particular, as we kind of get this off the ground, our target audience really is our current resident students to try and get them back. That likely will expand, I'm hoping, over the next, you know, year or so. But right now, really trying to get those families to come back to Somerset, so. And then having some, you know, ongoing conversation about the staffing piece of it, of pool assistant overseeing that. Right now, we don't want to go too far into that in the event that we may only have, you know, one or two kids and that's pretty easy to kind of manage versus all of a sudden if we have nine or 10 kids, that might look a little bit different. So trying to look at the FTE that we have, you know, which kind of meshes a little bit with what Mark was talking about with some of the distance learning opportunities that we know we're going to have to talk about and plan for in each of our buildings for the families, as you said, Roxanne, that don't feel comfortable coming back. And I do want to be kind of clear that, you know, the virtual academy, you know, for our ninth through 12th graders really is a different conversation than if I don't feel comfortable back, coming back, what are some distance learning opportunities for my child, right? The timing of this was unfortunate because it does kind of bleed together. But I've, I've tried to be really cognizant of keeping the virtual academy is kind of over here versus some of the other conversations we know we're going to have to have regarding offering some distance learning to our families, so. So that's what I have, but I'm, I'm excited about the messages I've received so far from the families I've heard from, which is encouraging, so more to come.
Thank you. Any questions for Shannon on that? Is there anything that you wanted to add, Mark, about the distance learning?
Yeah, not, not at this time. Again, right now, we're being consumed with how we're going to deal with that, the whole virtual distance piece for right, just with the virus piece of it. You know, what, what we were talking about several meetings ago was someone coming in and coordinating this effort and really organizing. But, you know, again, that may be a position that we need down the road. But right now, we talked administratively of how we're going to do that per each building. Elementary, how are you going to take a look at the, how are you going to deal with the virtual or distance learning down here? If we have to go back to that. Middle school, how is that going to look for you? High school, how is that going to look to you? A little easier with the middle school and high school because they're one-to-one. Elementary, you know, but how are we going to, how are we going to, you know, we did it for a couple of months this last year. Now, what if we're forced to do that for a whole year? That's a real game changer too. So, again, the topic that I was on before with this may resurface again, but again, we'll take it one step at a time and see how we can do this. It'll probably be by reassigning staff that we have already, so.
I read through the staff comments on their portion of the survey about distance learning, and I started with the parents, but I think there's over 300 parent responses. And I, the things I noticed a lot of comments on were the request for more Google Classroom training, more CSO training, and what can we do to engage students? There were many, many comments about, no matter how many times they reached out to parents and kids via email and phone, they weren't getting responses. Do you want to tell us anything about that, Trish?
Well, the news, we have, I wish I had numbers in front of me. We have, oh gosh, we have beginning, intermediate, and advanced Google training as well as CSO that are being held regionally because this is something we requested through CSO 11. So they've got their folks that have been pushing on multiple opportunities. We have been paying our teachers to participate in those multiple opportunities and allowing them to take all. So if they want to start with beginner, even though they use Google Classroom, terrific. Really great response to that. CSO has been really, also a very good response. We also have an in-house kind of expert who is highly involved in the CSO community. So she's on backup because even though they continually offer, we have a few people that want more. So we will be offering additional this August. However, we have, we have, I don't know, gosh, I must have sent through, I don't know, 60, 70, 75. I mean, we have so many staff members and then they report back and good, good stuff. So we have that. The engagement piece is the piece that Dr. Bezek is talking about, where kind of that coaching, on instructional coaching, on how to really create engaging lessons and really engage kids through that screen, which is highly, which is difficult. But no family response, it comes back to that equity piece too. So how are we engaging our community and our families if they don't have the support systems in place? Or they have a student who has learning disabilities? Or they don't have access or good access or consistent access? So there, there's just many, many tiers to that survey and how we can respond to that.
Did anybody have any further questions for Trish or Shannon or Mark on this? All right, item 11, diversity, equity, and inclusion. You're on the sheet of paper. Sorry.
You want to start off, Trish?
Sure.
We, just, let me tee this up. You know, we had a great conversation with Hannah the other day. I think we were there for almost two hours, just talking about some of the things that we've been working on for the past, I guess where we were four years ago, where, where we are right now and where we're going. And Trish had a lot of things documented or just, you know, the ball's really in her court here. And I think, you know, we've done a great job so far, but if you want to just give an update and, you know, let the board know of our progress and where we're at.
Hannah, it was fun to talk to you.
Yeah, you too.
It really was. It was, it was fun to share with her what we've done. And also, I took some, some pretty awesome notes of some other suggestions she had, some of which she already stated to you. We did not get to go public with our work this year around equity because of COVID. Typically, we do a report out of strategic plan. And we have a core group of folks that are able to look at all the materials, hear all of the work, understand the results of that work, and then kind of measure where we are in our journey. So inclusion and diversity were written into the strategic plan years ago. So for the last three years, we've been working on it. We would like to change the action plan, we're going to include the word equity because that is really where a bulk of our work has been. Wisconsin, you know, rates right at the top with academic achievement, but when you really look at that student learning and you look at disparities, disparities between many marginalized groups, we are almost at the bottom. I think it's number 48 if you look at ratio disparity. So given all that, DPI has also been really pushing this work out along with all of our professional organizations. So three years ago, when we started the plan, the administrative team was first out. So we went out and were trained in integrating comprehensive systems of equity. And it was an eye-opener. And it really started with grounding yourself in your own identity. And it started to understand how we have been an institution that has continued the gap, widened the gap, even though the things we're doing, we think are going to, you know, help our students. But it was really understanding the bigger picture and how, how we play a role and what we can own. So I was really grateful that even though we didn't get to report out to the core team, we had already been documenting our work from last year. So you have this attached. The links are not all there, but if you have questions about any part of it, I'd be happy to share that with you. This is the last three years. It started with the administrative team and it started with an equity audit. That equity audit really looked at multiple factors and how our students fare. So equity through DPI standards really talks about proportional representation of all students. So when you look at gender, or you look at students with a disability, or you look at race, or you look at socioeconomic, you break those down and we looked at multiple factors from achievement, attendance, behavior, discipline, on and on. So we broke it all down, we looked at the whole group, we looked at the proportional representation for the whole group, then we broke it down to subgroups and then for each category to make sure that we were having equitable distribution. As we went through it, really, some big points came to light. One big action step was us doing a book study with Ken Williams, who really talked and challenged us all to make the bar the bar. Is the bar accessible to all students, all student groups? And some actions that came out of that, for example, was the high school eliminating their, their classes that were below the bar. So classes like a pre-algebra class. If algebra is the bar and we know students need that to be successful, then how are we going to get all students there? And that's students who have disabilities, students coming from varied backgrounds and so on. Year two of the equity work, the really work moved into training our district leadership teams. So about 24, I guess about 24 of our building leaders, one per department, and then included others. So we had representation from grade levels and specialists and so on. They went through kind of the same training that we did, held locally, where we presented the training to them. Some of that training was about being an ally, some of that training was about microaggression and so on. They went through the whole year and at the end of that year, we came out with 10 equity non-negotiables. They became the teachers then for year three. So we continued our journey in learning, then they continued sharing out to support staff and certified staff on those release days that we do once a month. So back through again, history of marginalization, identity awareness, the words we use, how powerful are the words that we use, and identifying students first and student-first vocabulary, and asset-based versus deficit-based language. So along with that, we did a lot of work around inclusion, looking at Shelley Moore through the special ed lens, the support staff lens, and then certified staff lens. This list is pretty comprehensive, not just including the equity training that we did in-house and through our professional organizations, but the district has also made a commitment to what was called WOW, working on the work, now called Leading for Learning. And Leading for Learning, their entire lens is really about achieving educational equity. So they start with a summit and they move to four meetings across the year. When Somerset shows up, we have to go on two different dates because they allow us to bring 12, so we do. We bring three student, or three teacher leaders and their principal from all three buildings. That work then is developed into a shareable presentation that we bring back and apply back here on district. So it's kind of multifaceted. What we've been doing and the work we've been doing, and it's hard work because a lot of this is grounded in youth system or just in knowledge and awareness. After every single training, we ask, what questions do you have? You know, and the responses, we collect them back and then we address those at the next training. It is, it is, it's good work, it's hard work, it's hard work for, for many, many folks. If you take a look across, I also included, we also included things like our students taking action, our stand group that started at our high school, which is an official club as of this year, went through the process to be approved, our, which is our GSA there. We have gifted and talented, we, on and on and on. So you can take a peek. On top of that, the courage retreat and the respect retreat, which really their premise is all about acceptance and speaking out and being an ally. I could go on and on, but it is here for you to view. Couple of things I took away in our conversation with Jonah that can be action steps for us immediately is just that awareness piece. I mean, we, we, I think we failed. We failed on pushing it out to parents. We did a great job internally. We're doing a great job trying to change our language and we call out each other all the time on the language we're using and we, that's okay. It's okay to get messy, it's okay to use the wrong words, and it's okay to ask questions, but we really don't have it highly visible out there. The other big action step right out of the gate is using kind of a spoof and putting in a parent resource corner. I mean, with everything that's going on here, there, in the far, in our own backyards, that would be an instant action step that would be not difficult to do and hopefully highly useful and also visible to our groups. So lots of good things, defining our vocabulary, that was a great idea. And put it out there. We just haven't done those things. We've done it in-house, but we haven't really made it visible to our public. We do share weekly updates, we do share newsletters on what's going on in the classroom, but we can do a much better job. I'm going to stop there, although you can see many, many more things that we've been doing and what audience and when it occurred over the last three years. We are really proud of this work and we know it's ongoing and we know we have a long way to go.
I see a noticeable difference in our buildings over the last four years from where we were. Even when Shannon took over and, you know, some of the issues we were dealing with at the high school. I, I'm happy with the direction we're going, but, you know, as Trish said, we can do more. We can do more. I think, you know, as she said, we do a good job internally, but communication is always an issue. You know, when we're in a community like this that does not have a newspaper or radio station or cable, what have you, and we talked about this at the bridging Somerset meetings, that the district should probably be the hub of communication in the area. And every time we get together, that's, that's one of our charges that falls back on us as far as trying to develop that. You know, Tasia started the scoop here a few months ago. as far as trying to develop that. And you know, Tasia started the scoop here a few months ago.
January or April?
January. And so that's slowly catching on and we're trying to purposely put all of our important things in there so people get used to looking at that. So uh, again, this is really something we can use, you know, for this venue also.
Hi, this is Patty.
Patty?
Yep, go ahead.
Okay. I just wanna say there's been a huge difference, sorry about the noise in the background. But um, from my, in the positive, from my son's freshman year to now going into his senior year, there's been a huge culture shift in the high school. Um, so it is working.
Good. And I can speak on behalf of the middle school. My daughter just completed eighth grade. And the stories she would tell me about how kindness that is being encouraged in the middle school and just acceptance of everyone, I definitely, all four years in the middle school, they were wonderful. With how, with how the kids were treating each other. I was really impressed.
Does that, was that the trust retreat or what?
Courage.
Courage retreat. You know, it started what, three years, four years?
Shannon, how long is the courage retreat and the respect retreat?
At least five or six. So the middle school is the courage retreat. The high school is a respect retreat.
Which are phenomenal. I mean, that really opens up the conversation.
Trish, what do we have for curriculum at elementary for um anti-bullying and, I mean, like Olveas? Or there's welcoming schools. There's some really good curriculums that can be tied in with social emotional learning that really, uh welcoming schools is one that is really equity-based. It'd be really easy to work in with mindfulness.
I was gonna say, I have not looked at that.
I'll send you some stuff.
That would be great. The one thing about curriculum too, I shared with Hannah as well, this year, we brought on new social studies materials. That has been a change. Um, but this year, we're bringing on new ELA materials, grades six through twelve. And the literature alone, the conversations, the critical thinking, um, the conversations we've had as high school and middle school and the kind of literature, we wanna make sure the diverse literature from different lenses has been really um exciting as well. And as the books are coming in, the folks in the district office wanna take them home and read them and bring them back. And we know, we know. Yes, yes, unfortunately, but it's going to be wonderful and add a whole other dimension.
That's a very easy action step.
Absolutely. Absolutely.
We've been adding a lot of curriculum the past few years. And all of our core areas, I believe, have a online component now, correct?
Um, elementary's still missing a little bit there. Our five through twelve all have online components, yes. Every core has an online component.
So that will help us with distance learning?
Absolutely. Absolutely. And it was per- funny, not really, but the ELA curriculum that we ended up purchasing for for use next year officially, we had just started a pilot. Just started. We just had to start, you know, put our toes in the water and did all the training and on how to use and access the online, how to use the online assessment tool and so on, right when COVID hit. So it was a pilot by fire there, but we were really grateful to have that in place at the right time. Um, and now we'll do a full training this August so that we really understand all the nuances of the new resource.
There were several comments by teacher in the distance learning survey about what went well and what they still need. And several of them talked about wanting more of the training from the publishing companies of this curriculum that is, they're very excited about. Uh, one of the math teachers said something about how the math lessons could be connected to Google Classroom, but they need more help with learning how to do that. Anything else for Trish or Mark on diversity, equity, and inclusion? Would it be safe to say that there'll be an article in the Spartan Scoop soon?
I think we can make that happen.
Thank you.
And look at maybe the website ideas, you know?
That Patty Joel sent us?
And I had mentioned.
So ours is out there, the whole plan. This whole piece is living on our website. But Hannah couldn't find it, which means we need to make that a little more accessible.
Uh, next item then is the school perception survey review. Um, I sent out the three documents, um plus the fourth one. And I hope that um you had some time to look that over and maybe came back with some ideas of areas that we should focus on. Does anybody want to begin with their ideas?
Well, wasn't one of the lowest ones we had was just communication with the staff. Uh, twenty percent or something thought that we were communicating with the staff. So I was wondering about that because we've been assessed not to reach out to staff and then they go to administration and then, you know, if they don't get the results or answers, then they come to the board. So really from our point, how do we, I mean, what, I guess I don't, I didn't see in there what they were looking for from, you know, to to hear from the board, what to communicate with them that, you know, other than watching this, you know, and hearing that, or us being out at events, you know, seeing us, I don't, I don't know what communication. I mean, we are not supposed to directly reach out to people or teachers or staff or students or.
Well, I took it to mean the board as, when I read those comments, I took them to be saying nothing from the board collectively. Like we did earlier, um thanking them for this horrendous year that we had. Stuff like that was how I took it. I took love of those comments.
Uh, Catherine, when you and I were talking before the agenda went out, I thought you had a really good idea.
Remind me of it.
We were talking about communication and you were kind of expressing the same things that you were saying. And you had thought that we should survey the staff and ask them, what is it you're looking for? What do you want?
Yeah, because our policy specifically says we are supposed to speak through our minutes.
Right.
And through our actions as a board. And so to individually communicate is kind of off the table for us. Um, and so what kind of communication and what more would they like, I guess is my question? Would they like more uh updates and more things like Katie's talking about? Do they want us to give them an uh more, more comments? I mean, I, I don't know, because we have to be driven by policy on what we're really supposed to do and say. So I'm, I, I love, if they want more, we'll give it to them. But what more do they want? I guess I didn't understand that part. So I, I think we can look through those comments and maybe come up with four or five questions.
Hi, Hannah. Thank you.
What, what kind of communication are you looking for? And how can we meet that need? We value that that you wanna, you want us to be transparent, you want us to be uh communicating. We'll meet that need if you tell us how you want it, Matt.
Well, I, I would hope people feel comfortable too. They see somebody out somewhere that they can address them with any item at any time. And obviously, we can't respond to it really at that point to mean anything, but we can bring it back to the board at least or email it so it gets on an agenda. So I would hope that would be, people feel comfortable doing that. But yeah, like, yeah, I guess.
Well, and I did think of one thing. Um, it was many years ago. I mean, Bob, you can maybe attest to this, but board members used to be assigned to buildings and we, they had liaisons. So staff and parents knew which board member to talk to about our things. And then we would then bring it forward to first the administrator, of course, and and then the superintendent. But I don't, maybe that's something that they're, they want a certain person to talk to. I, I don't know. I, I don't know what they need, but um.
Maybe just a follow-up question to the staff. Uh, give us some specifics would be helpful versus us trying to throw our dirt.
Right.
And, you know, can you elaborate a little bit more on that?
Yeah, we hear you. We wanna honor it. Please tell us what you'd like. Mark?
Uh, you know, this might be a strategy to increase communication uh with the board and individuals, not just staff, but community. I don't know if you ever thought of doing a a listening session prior to your board meeting, like, let's just say the last meeting of the month. You have, um, our meeting starts at six thirty. Six o'clock, you identify two board members and myself that will be here at six o'clock. Anybody who wants to come in and talk. And then during the meeting, one of the board members give, give an update that would happen at the listening session. That way they don't have to feel pressured to public comment if they don't want to, but just have a general conversation. You know, a lot of questions can be answered in a general conversation. It's just a strategy we use, I've used in the past. Uh, you know, you could, like I say, once a month or every other month, usually consistency. And then just rotate your board members through it. You two have it, January, you two have it, February, you two have it, you know, something like that.
I think that's a great idea.
Sure. Yeah, I'm open to.
But I also think, I, I also think, you know, just putting it out there in a survey form or something, that's another. We can do both and get, because I know I was reading one of the comments was, um, I'm glad you put the meetings on YouTube. It's the only way we know of important issues being discussed that impact our position. And that's a pretty, a pretty powerful statement. It's like, maybe if we give them some tools for directly communicating with us, we won't have that issue.
So how would you like to proceed with this item? Do you want a couple people to write up something to be sent out to all staff? Do you want, how, how would you like to proceed?
We could send it out to all staff. You know, the board would like to improve their.
Communication with all staff?
Yeah, with all staff.
And would you give us some specific suggestions on what you're looking for?
And say, you know, we could even put it in there. Would you utilize a meeting once a month of two members of the ministry before the meeting? Mark?
Uh, would you let me draft something up and bring it back to the next board meeting to say how we can just, I need brain time to see how we can do that, to send, send it out at appropriate time and what have you. But let me bring something back to the next meeting as far as some type of communication survey piece to the staff. And you know, another idea might be is someone from the board write up a board meeting recap. You know, rather than just the minutes, maybe a recap of what happened in the board meeting that's, that we could send out to staff.
No, they, I mean, you've got the video, you've got the minutes.
And we do post the agenda and we post the minutes.
It's all out there.
However, maybe all it would, maybe one little thing that would help is if we actually emailed the agendas and the minutes to all staff. You know, it doesn't seem like it would be necessary, but maybe that's a little thing that we could do that doesn't take a lot of time, I don't think. And.
It just shows effort.
It shows effort and that we're making an attempt and.
I can honestly say as a staff member, I've never looked at the agenda of the school board meeting where I would.
Right.
But if it came in my email, I might take a look and I might say, hey, what's going on here? Tell me more about that. Tasia, would that be a big deal to just add that in? At least we're making an effort.
I like, I like that idea too.
Let me draft something up for you for the next meeting and we can take a look at as far as board communication.
Okay.
So let me see, that would be July twentieth, right? Were there any other items in the uh?
I remember one on laptops.
Yes.
Um, so there were several comments about the Chromebooks that everybody was given, all of the teachers and struggles that some of them have with them. And I don't know if it's just the lack of functionality of them or as opposed to the laptop somebody was used to using, or if it's the size. But it would be nice for us to address, they should, I think they should have some other options than this little Chromebook.
That came up in the survey on the distance learning too. Several teachers said that.
Yeah, I didn't get to read it.
They couldn't do some of it.
Huge documents came to us today, so.
Right. But it, it just was in, it showed up in both places. So I think that's more evidence that it is important to at least some of the staff. And it's making a difference in how they can do their work.
Right. So I, I just, Trish, do you have any idea what the issues are with it specifically?
From the conversations I've had, when we moved to Chromebooks, it was because we moved to be a Google school. And years later, after moving to be a Google school and using Google Classroom and having multiple training sessions and having EdTech Day every February and um training, 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 we then became, we went to one-to-one. And so the way you do one-to-one is first you start with teachers having the same device your students will be learning from.
Okay.
And so we moved to Chromebooks for multiple reasons. That was push one. Alongside that was budget. In order to get Chromebooks for students and have that part of the budget freed up, because that's a big investment and it's a reoccurring investment, we were able to get multiple Chromebooks for the cost of one laptop. Every teacher, though, has a laptop in their classroom attached to their smartboard because you cannot run a smartboard off Chromebook.
Right.
Those will be replaced on cycle. In fact, that cycle is coming up. You need to have a better processor so that the video and what have you on a smartboard will work with high functionality. Um, the one piece that we found as far as some of our staff was using Microsoft Office. And although a few of our staff members, including our business office and like a Jen Sutton who teaches it, no one has to use Excel for anything on this campus. No one has to use Word for anything on this campus and so on. Um, Google Docs, uh Google Sheets, Google Forms, Google Slides, all have that same functionality and it's what we're using with our students. It's what um.
And I hate it.
And what?
I hate it.
I love it. It's all about mindset.
When you're outside the school setting though, you don't get editing rights, you don't even get into a document. It's not as, it's not as cheery when you're outside.
That's purposeful there, Ms. Franklin. It is purposeful that you can set.
Even in our documents.
Correct.
Well, and that comes with the training. So how do you share a document, giving people the right editing, the correct editing rights so that they have functionality within the document? That's part of that. Um, the Microsoft world has the same kind of sharing system, just called a different name, that we don't use across our campus because our students are using uh Google.
And frankly, I'm not kidding, third and fourth graders are better at Google than most adults. I've got those in my house and she sits down and does a Google document. Her distance learning, she was sent, her summer school stuff was all in Google Docs. And she's nine and she's editing and sending back things and senior teacher are editing and doing it and she's nine.
But so part of the problem was part of the bigger issue that um they didn't have their laptops at home with them for distance learning?
Because it's hooked up to their smartboard. So you have to disconnect about ten, I'm probably exaggerating.
Yes, you are. Yes, you are.
But I remember crawling under my desk trying to disconnect.
Yes, I had to do that too.
Well, for most of them, they're on a documentation. So it's just a click.
Okay. So things have changed.
So all of those things are just, again, about practice, training, and mindset. Now, given that, we love Publisher, right? As, especially as an elementary teacher, I love making my newsletters on Publisher. Okay, Google does not have that capability yet. They do have add-ons. They do have um other programs we can use. They give us similar but not the same. And we've also problem solved around that because in Watts, Watts, Pam Philippi, and she's putting out these super cool newsletters in, in the Google world. We're like, Pam, why are you using? And all she did was take a slide from like PowerPoint, but we use Google Slides, and created it not to be a slide shape, but to be eight and a half by eleven piece of paper. And then we can do all of, all sorts of fun things within that. So.
Training.
That's training. Um, would some people love to hand me back the Chromebook and get a laptop? But as a system and as budget and as functionality, that's where we are. So they do have one in their room, then they have the Chromebook that is highly portable, uh back and forth.
Can you get a larger Chromebook?
We can.
With a larger screen?
Absolutely. That's more dollars.
Yeah.
But as long as the budget allows, our next cycle through, we certainly can. One other, I was just gonna say about that now. One other, I was just gonna say about that now.
Sorry.
No problem, no problem. I'll come back to it.
If we're expecting our teachers to do distant teaching, the comments I was reading on the survey was that they couldn't do the things they needed to do to teach via distance learning on a Chromebook. And I, some of the teachers wrote in their survey response how they had to come back to school and get, unhook their laptops so they could bring it home. And you know, if we're next year, all of a sudden having to shut down.
They can take their laptops home.
Well, are they supposed to disconnect it and do that every night?
They've got PowerPoints as well.
From their Smartboards?
They've got additional PowerPoints as well, they do. What I was going to say, I lost it again, I was thinking, what did you say? All of our curriculum is in the cloud, so they can access everything. All we need is a device to get us out. We don't need a memory, we don't need any functionality of that device other than to get us out to the cloud. Using Google Classroom, that's out there. So it should not be as difficult. Again, we might be back to training at one and/or a few elementary folks that may have some paper issues that they want to scan or upload or something. Perhaps I can dig deeper to see exactly what those kind of curricular issues were because I can't think of too many.
But they can't access their Smartboard documents on the Chromebook? Is that correct?
They, they can go through VMware, which is cumbersome. Remember, we're trying to get rid of VMware. Yeah, yeah, those are those letters. Yeah, that has, that is a cumbersome process. Because in order, if they have it on their server, we have encouraged folks to move away from Smartboard because Adobe Flash, yeah, from Smart, Smartboard, the program, not their Smartboard. You can use any program up on a Smartboard, any touch, all of our curriculum is touch. You can use all of it there. Adobe Flash is not going to be supported anymore in the, in the very near future. And we cannot control that right now with Smartboard, gosh, I might not say the right word. Smart technology, like the program that comes with the Smartboard. But you can use your Google Classroom, you can use your, any of the online resources and have them interact.
So as far as a board response to this item on the school perception survey, would it be appropriate to take some sort of action of directing Trish to look further into these specific issues and trying to come up with a solution for the people who.
For accommodations for some of it.
Expressed a problem.
You're saying they have docking stations?
Yeah.
So they can take their, this is a docking station every day to take it home, my backpack every single night. I'm, I'm really hoping that's not.
But this is a very small size, so for some, you know.
But I'm just saying, they have laptops and all it is is unhooking it and bringing it home. I really don't want to have this conversation anymore. And that's, it's, bring your laptop home from your computer, unhook the docking station.
And give more training.
And give more training. My wife used that Chromebook the whole, the whole time she was teaching distance. She had a Chromebook every day. She didn't even use her laptop, because everything's in the cloud. She puts everything in the cloud and that's, that's where everything is.
So is this one of the items from the school perception survey that we don't want to pursue?
I don't, how do you make a goal out of it?
Right.
That's what I was trying to understand from the goal.
Well, I don't think they all have to be goals. Like some of it could just be a direction.
That's what I understood that we were supposed to be prepared for was to find goals important set.
Oh, that was now what I.
I think, I can go back to the email, but I think I said something.
It's okay, I'm happy to.
Sorry about that.
Action, to take action on something as well. Was there anything else that anybody wanted to bring up? Something that I saw in the survey results that kind of go together is the decision-making and the evaluation of new initiatives. Did any?
I recall the the introduction of new initiatives and not taking something off the plates.
Welcome to the world of education.
I know, but you know.
So many things are mandated.
Yeah. I don't know, Lori, I did not reread all of those since our last one, so.
The only other one I, that kind of jumped out at me is the piece about student discipline.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not speaking from experience because I, in the middle school, it seemed to be good, but it seems to be a common theme within these responses. And I don't know.
I agree, Roxanne. What I think we've done, a few things will take a little bit of time, such as Trent and Joe Hutter made infusing some new positions that we created to address a little bit more straightforward with some of the discipline. So I'm hopeful to see that, you know, pan out and.
And behavior coaches.
Exactly, yep.
I think we need to continue training of those behavior coaches, however. What tends to happen in districts is we put these people in these positions, give them a little bit of training and say, go for it. And so I think that might be something that we could direct is that we make sure that people in behavior positions continue to get behavioral training with an equity lens and a restorative lens. Because that really is what it's about when you're talking about behaviors of all kids, not just spec or not just kids of lower socioeconomic. And then that's a very different training than going off to some trainings that are just strictly behavioral.
We did a training this last year and we sent a team across the board. So not only the behavior coaches, you know, the Joe, Kristen, but we sent a team of teachers. And they came back and then trained building leadership and then brought it back to staff meetings because it was so impactful.
We did that twice this year. It was a fall and during distance learning too.
Aren't we only in our second year of going through really pushing restorative practices? What do we have dealing with it for?
PBIS.
PBIS. And really wasn't used the right way, but again, so as Bob said, you know, we're just, two years is not enough to really, you know.
See improvement.
It's moving in the right direction.
We've also, excuse me, we've also written it into our mental health grant. So working with the People Services Team to talk about continued restorative practice training, continued, you know, on and on and on. So it is embedded in all we do and actually in some of the funding that we're receiving from DPI. So that's a guarantee and it's a need.
So is there something with that that we should take action on or?
How do you get numbers? You know, I mean, how do you, how do you?
Evaluate it.
How can you measure if things are working? That's hard.
Right.
That's hard. You can go strictly referrals, but that doesn't answer because.
No.
Right. And suspensions, because that doesn't answer. It's, it's hard. I'm not in a school every day, obviously, but is, are, is, is almost everyone trained in behavioral? Like, for instance, my daughter made a comment that someone's so, so mean, he yells at everybody in the hall. And I thought, I'm sure he's not yelling, that's your perspective, but I'm trying to explain to her, well, every adult in the school is gonna have to encourage you to behave. So you might think he's mean and not doing what he should be doing, but he really is doing what he's supposed to be doing. He's supposed to be encouraging you to get moving to your class or whatever. So I'm just wondering if, you know, is, is everybody taught behavioral practices? I don't know, is there?
No, we do.
Yeah.
We do, we do whole staff, we do support staff.
Okay, yeah.
We do trauma-informed care, we're sending waves of people to responsive classroom. We are layer upon layer upon layer.
Yep.
And then it has to be practiced.
Yep.
And then you have to come back to it. And then you have to practice.
So these comments though, they came from staff?
Or support staff.
I said the staff or teachers.
Yeah.
So I, I don't, I don't know how you address it except to continue doing these treatments and provide, opening them up.
There were a lot of comments about support staff in particular not getting information or not being included in meetings or not getting some training.
Yeah.
One person even made a specific suggestion about having a lead support staff person in each building who was identified by the teaching staff as being very good at his or her job and having that person designated to train in new support staff employees. We have mentors for our teachers. Do we have mentors for our support staff?
Not efficient.
Might that be something that we should look at?
This might be something that Shannon might be able to comment on a little bit more. We've talked about it in the past, again, at its expense, but on top of that, each support staff has a, an adult, not an adult, but I don't, I didn't sound right. Has a special ed teacher.
Supervising teacher.
That's what I'm looking for, it's like. Who that, who they, who they work tightly with, receive direction from, can go to for questions, receive scheduling, talk about kids. And that's what I'm going to defer to you, because that's what we decided would be for now the best bet. Plus inclusion in staff meetings, multiple trainings across the year. We train our support staff, I will, I will say, more than the surrounding schools because we keep an eye on all of that kind of stuff. On top of that, because we have moved to a school-wide title program, 100% of our support staff, regardless of who they work with, what population they work with, what level they work at, have to produce documentation of training across many different areas across the year. We have to keep that on file with federal requirement. Shannon, anything to add there?
Well, I just, you know, from a building perspective, it may be helpful just to dig a little bit deeper in terms of the type of information or meetings, et cetera, that support staff maybe feel like they're not a part of. I know each building principal sends out a weekly update and support staff, it goes to all staff in the building, right? So, you know, staff meetings and those kinds of things, support staff are invited to attend, they're added to the calendar invites. Most of the time, that's obviously past their contracted time, so there's, you know, some push-pull there. But, so as a, as a principal, I guess I would just maybe want some more information, very similar to the conversation you were just having about how to communicate with staff. I would maybe just want to know what support staff feel like they're not, what, what aren't they getting in terms of information, you know? And sometimes, you know, the reality is sometimes there's things that, and this isn't unique to support staff, but sometimes there's things and information about students and families that maybe can't be shared to the fullest extent and, and I know that can be frustrating. But again, I wouldn't say that's unique necessarily just to support staff. Sometimes there's situations that come up that our hands are tied a bit on information, so I don't know if that's maybe what, what it was in reference to, but, because I read the comments as well. So, you know, maybe just some more information.
Is there anything further that anyone would like to discuss on this item? Okay, then construction update, Mark.
Okay, I'll go through this fairly quickly. We had a POC meeting this morning, this afternoon, this evening at five o'clock. And at these meetings, they give us an update on all the different projects, the three buildings on the site. And I'll just walk through these really quickly. The high school, they, they're finished paint, they're painting. They're gonna be done with drywall taping within the next two weeks. They're already setting tile in the office, offices there. It is on schedule. And we say on schedule, you know, the turnover was, is to be October, August twenty-eighth. So everything's based off of that. It's, you know, most of these are good projects that are going to be done before that. Let's see, middle school, they're working on the finishing. There's carpeting and paint going in over in area A over there. They're, they're moving along really well. They've, it's a little slow with the windows and the commons area, getting those in up, up above, but those are supposed to be starting in the next couple of weeks. But again, it's, it's coming along really well. Elementary school, the roof is done. Work that remains to be done in there is some firework, fire alarm work. And that's supposed to be done over the next, next couple of weeks. Be, that building will be ready for summer school and starts the end of July. The, the problem we're having in some of these buildings is the delay with the chillers and some of the air handling units. And I think the one for, the latest one is going to be the elementary school, which is being shipped August twenty-eighth, or August twelfth. And then that'll be put in right, right away, but they'll still have air and everything in there until the new one comes and it may be down for a couple of days. But they've been able to substitute things out and make sure the long lead items they were able to replace. The site, again, progressing very well, but there is issues with our holding ponds that they have to take a look at right now. You know, these ponds, you know, after a certain amount of time should be dry. And, you know, that, that five, six inch rain we got was a pretty good test of what we, what we had here. And they're finding that they have to do some rework on this. And there were some issues brought up tonight that, you know, they're, they're probably gonna have to reconfigure or do some rework on the one up here by the elementary school. The one down by the high, middle school is not done yet, so.
Didn't we already redo one or?
What's that?
Make it, change it, no?
That one's just not, the big one's not done yet, although, you know, the, the water, see, the water stays on site and it has to dissipate into the ground at a certain rate and it's not meeting that rate. And so before the big torrential rain, they were digging out the one over by the elementary school here. Yeah, they're finding they got bad soil down there well. Why, why didn't you know that? Well, they should have. So again, you know, Bruce will chime in here too. I mean, we've just got some, you know, we're getting to the point where we're gonna have some disputes on some things and we have to work out, you know, how this is gonna be remedied and that, because, you know, there's some other issues that are going on with some of the black topping and paths that we have to take a look at to see, you know, if we, you know, who damaged what and how we're gonna resolve that. But, you know, overall, we're getting through this pretty good. But, you know, you get towards the end of the project and you feel like you get beat up every once in a while when these extras come in and things like that, so you gotta really kind of watch them. Bruce, anything that you want to add?
So we still showed we had a hundred thousand in contingency left. But we also add in a lot of extras, like we haven't just, this isn't contingency spend. If I was a contractor, I'd say this is owner adds, which are a big portion of our money that we've spent and they have it. I ask them all the time, I would kind of do it that way, so you wouldn't see like a contingency usage coming down so hard, but they spend all contingency first. And then they started asking us for the, I guess, owner money. It's still contingency, because like we said from the beginning, we had a million and a half in our own dollars. So we still have credit and contingency on the owner's side to pay for this. So even though it shows down to about a hundred thousand with all these things that we talked about tonight, we're still, there's still plenty of money to finish the job and they're gonna be on time. It's just, we're using a lot of items that are alternates that were once early on that we took out. And then once we realized we were so far under budget, we were gonna let Matt pack in. So they're a good thing. So there are good things, there are adds, there are extras. We just wanna make sure, sometimes alternates get priced a little high later in the job because they're not competitive with bid. But, so we're just making sure that.
Roundabout's a perfect example.
Yep.
You know, of that, and so you just gotta watch it. So we are, I did wanna point out one thing here, I got it up here on the left. You know, we met last week, we had some pinch points in the, in the. I think we're ventilating this on here. You know, one of the biggest things we sold this on was traffic flow. And, you know, until you get the curb and gutter in, all of a sudden it's like, oh, that isn't gonna work. And so a few of the things that they have to change and they, they know it. And again, we'll get into a little discussion on who's gonna pay for what here, but I'll, I'll identify four things that we, we saw after the curb and gutter was in. And first pinch point is up here by the elementary school parking lot, right here. This is supposed to be two-way, ooh, two-way traffic right here. And it's great if everyone drives Priuses and Volkswagens and go karts and motorcycles, but to try and get a suburban coming this way and a four-wheel drive truck around this corner, because this is all staging right here. Cars come in here, up around here, it's all parent, and then here and then out. Okay, so this has to be knocked down so two vehicles can meet here, you know, back and forth, okay? And you could drive over and you can see right away if you drive in there, this ain't gonna work. So the next one is right here, you know, here's the DO here. Next one is right here, there's two issues with this intersection here and I had to have duty come out from the bus company and we had to look at this. So the buses are coming out of the lot up there, coming here, they're taking a right-hand turn and coming back over to this bus area here. Thing is, is they can't make this, if cars are lined up here, they can't make this turn from the right turn lane. So what they have to do is take out a chunk of this corner here and stripe this. So these cars coming out here are right tight. Well, I made it bigger. So they're right tight to this corner here, so these buses, and they'll still have to use the center lane and swing in here because this corner's so tight, so that, that will be fixed by chopping this down here. The other thing is, is originally, you know, you come in from the, how do you get it back down?
Move it, just look at that, look at that part. No, just move it, switch your hand.
Okay, so you, so you come in here from the, you come in here from I, down this way, there was no left turn to the district office here, which made no sense. So they have to, so you have this all striped here. So this will be, you know, one lane continually through and then there'll be a, they'll have, they'll widen this out a little bit and then this'll be, so there's a turn lane here to come into the high school lot, but just continue that turn lane up here, so you can, you don't block traffic.
Yeah.
The other spot was, let's see, that was one, so there's two of them over, elementary, two of them right there. And then the third one was, let's see, okay, right here. God, how do we get the smaller? Oh, there it is, up here, okay. So, okay, so one over here, two here, three turning lane, the fourth one is over here when the buses come in. You know, you can, they come in here, park here, and they come out and they have to snake around here. We're gonna remove this whole island here, so it's all open, it'll help with snow removal and, and what have you. So we're just gonna, we're just gonna be removing some pinch points and I believe Georgia had mentioned today that they're taking out some concrete or some sidewalks over here by the new main entry of the middle school here to, to eliminate, just make more room over there. So again, I just wanna let you know that if you hear anything, because soon as cars start traveling around here, I've, I've already heard about people trying to, you know, meet over here, it's not good. And as we sold this on increasing traffic flow, if we had those in there, we're gonna get shot, because it's gonna, with this here situation here, we just moved the congestion from here to here.
Right.
So again, those, I just want you to give you a heads up on that. The other pieces of roundabout, and Bob, can you give an update on that? That's what we're looking for action on tonight.
Yeah, sure. So I sent Mark a message that I'm gonna forward it off to you about the bid award. The bid was accepted by the village to go to stout construction. That grand total was the $434,000 amount. The bid alternate total was the village's portion of that and the base bid amount was the roundabout or the school's portion of the bid, so.
Say that again, Bob, I'm sorry, I'm looking at it, but I don't.
Yeah, I was kinda working backwards there. So that middle column is stout construction.
Yeah.
That was the bid that was awarded and accepted by the village last Monday. And that base bid amount of $275,000 is for the roundabout, for the, the school's portion of it.
Okay.
And the alternate base bid was the villages to take a portion of Sunrise Drive there and get that to blend in with the roundabout, because we're gonna have some, some areas that we're going to need approval. The village will pick up that amount, because we'll go back to essentially Sunrise Drive and redo all of that to come up, so.
Thank you for all your work.
Yes, you're welcome, I'm glad, we were a little nervous.
Yeah, yeah.
Because we had six bids that were pulled, which we felt was good. The biggest thing with the communication was we were trying to get the substantial completion on the last week of Jill, of August. And I didn't have, we didn't have any contractors that felt comfortable with that date. So we pushed it out to October 9th, which substantial completion would mean there's a binder lift, that first layer of asphalt. All the curbs in, that road's functioning the way it is, but that, essential that driving layer of asphalt, the additional three inches would go on and then site restoration and all that could come after October 9th. We'll meet with stout and get the schedule and to see when they will start and start coordinating that, which will come next week after contracts are signed. So that's kind of it in a nutshell.
And Mark said you saved us about $100,000?
$130,000.
$130?
Yep.
And that's pretty remarkable and.
This ought to be a month?
Uh huh.
$130,000 for a month difference in the schedule, I guess, I would hope the community would say as well.
Worth it. How will people get into the school district though?
So that was where another expense came. We're gonna do this under construction, so instead of shutting the street down, we will keep the street open.
Oh, wow.
Which requires a substantial amount of, of labor. Around $20,000 I think was their, their cost. But there's not a real good alternative, especially for emergency services. So if somebody on the development west of the school district was hurt or if there was a fire, there was not a good area and the school campus roads were not gonna be open. We didn't really want the, the wear surface to be the area where semi trucks, you know, then coming through the district were ruining all the fresh black top and then we had another issue, so. We felt the best issue, the best solution to that was to do another traffic, which is the most complicated. But I think it's most sensible, this type of construction project, so. I've never worked with stout before, didn't know they existed, but we've got some good feedback from other communities that have worked with them. They said they're very detail oriented, they're efficient and they get their job done on time, so. I expect them to finish this well before the October 9th.
Oh, that's good.
Be awesome. But I, you know, you are a member of the school board, but that is your day job, working for the village. And I think the school board should send a letter thanking you for your efforts on behalf of all of the taxpayers.
I appreciate that, but it's unnecessary.
No, I, yeah, it may not be necessary, but I think it should be acknowledged.
To the village?
Yeah, yep, you bet. Sure.
I agree. I can draft something and send it out for approval and?
Don't send it to Bob.
Yeah.
Don't send it to me, otherwise they'll be, look like collusion. So the, the villages motion was contingent on the school board approving this and the bid, the base bid total, which was $247,999.95.
I'll make a motion.
A second.
Any further discussion? Patty, Joe, did you have a question?
I did not, I thought we were voting.
Oh. All right.
That's what I was thinking. Just lighter to that.
So all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. So does that mean the first month of school that traffic will be kind of slow because of the construction?
Yes.
Yes, no?
No. So that, no, it's not gonna impede traffic at all. So remember, school starts
Right.
At 7:30, 50, whatever time in the morning, then there's a nice six hour gap where we won't have a lot of traffic. We'll see a lot of work being done during the day.
Okay.
We won't have the natural flow of the roundabout, because, you know, we just won't have it there, but they'll still have access.
Okay. And the problems with the four areas that you were showing us in this map? That will be taken care of by?
Yeah, I would assume that that'll be taken care of in the next.
They're, they're still on site, so they're just.
Yeah, the next couple of weeks, I would, next couple of weeks, I think that'll be done.
Ball curve again.
Well, they're just going through the paperwork and the.
Does that add expense to us?
It's gonna be one of those things, you should have a turning radius done. I mean, we should have had turn radius for all the buses and we do trucks and fire trucks and you always have a civil plan that shows those turn radius. We don't have that sheet, I mean, again, we hire the, we hire the people to do that, they should have done it, but. There might be some cost, but like you said, we're, we're getting some concrete back.
I'm not expecting to see an, an increase in this because we're removing some things.
And this is also Mark and Johnson doing all the curve.
So, but, you know, these are all things in our pocket to say, you know, this is not on us.
Okay, good, because I didn't think it should be.
Curve is, I mean, it's pretty minor, I mean, this is, we're talking $10,000 worth of work. Honestly, it's not a lot, and there's still this grading afterwards.
I had a community member contact me asking a question and I might not get the words exactly right. Something about a mobile cooling unit at the middle school. Something big and it had a big.
Dehumidifier.
What, that's what it is, a dehumidifier?
A dehumidifier right now. Or, or just the big, the cooling unit in the building, so that you can keep working, they can dry it out with all the taping and painting going on.
Yeah, they can't let the, can't let the humidity get to that and affects all the, everything curing, tile and. So they have to maintain a temperature.
Okay, thank you, they wanted to know about that. Anything else on this item, construction update? Okay, we're ready for topics for action. Roxanne, would you like to make a motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve number 14, A, B, C, and D.
I'll second that.
Would you, Tasia, when you type that up in the minutes, will you make sure that the dollar amounts for the invoices are there?
Yep.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion on that item? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you.
I think Mario also says yes.
Once around the table, Bob, would you like to start?
I don't have anything.
Roxanne?
I'm just gonna quickly say to Mark and Shannon and all of the administrators that are working so hard to find, figure out what we're gonna do in the fall. I know it's stressful, I wanna acknowledge that I really appreciate what you're doing. You can't please everybody, it's gonna be a really tough decision and I, and I know so many other people really appreciate all your hard work.
Thank you.
I will second that, and I got nothing new.
Catherine?
Bruce? I would like to thank Leslie Thomas for her work on that grant. We won the second amount, that was $8,672.50. So thank you, Leslie, for your work on that and I understand she's gonna be here.
Yeah, she's gonna pop up on the next meetings, probably when she gets the third one.
Right. May as well.
And then I would just also like to express condolences to Robert Swanson's family on behalf of the school district. Bob Swanson volunteered for the school district for 30 years. Doing, working with the athletic department, doing books and keeping time for football and basketball and track events. And he died in June of COVID-19. So I just wanted to express our condolences to his family, yes?
The one thing I forgot is that we were gonna comment on commencement, that plans are still rolling forward and we're creating distancing spaces and, you know, what have you, and I think we're almost to the final plans now.
Just pray for no rain. Whatever you can do. No rain next Thursday.
Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn?
Some move.
Second?
I second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
If opposed, motion is adjourned at 8:30.